Now in session at 6:30. All are present and accounted for. Robin is on line, correct? Okay. So we can move ahead. I'll entertain a motion to prove the minutes of August 13.
And wave the reading.
And I do the reading out here, Mark. Thank you.
Second.
Any corrections or additions?
I made a correction of the date.
Yep. So that. Anything else? Okay. All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Robin. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Under old business, I assume we still have not redid it yet for some storage financing?
Hot! Guess what? We have.
We did. Excellent.
So we have the proof of. She sent me a picture because she couldn't make it tonight.
Okay.
But yeah, according to this, she. If you want to read it. I'd like to.
Yeah. And that was the last item if I remember correctly.
Correct. She has changed the design. She wants just a single, single storage building instead of multiple unit type storage. So this one will be for recreational vehicles and boats and trailers and stuff like that.
There's one on there anyway.
What's that?
There was just one on there originally anyway.
One building, yeah.
It wasn't individual units.
One building, yeah.
It was individual units though.
But it was, yeah, individual doors. And this is going to be a same-sized building, same other thing, except just one.
And since she's changed the size of her building, how should it be sent back to us? Right?
The same size.
Same size.
Same size.
Less dollars. Less money.
Sure. Are you set with that, Robin, Mark?
Okay. Others can read it. Go ahead and read it. It's fine. Go ahead.
Are you using that unit?
I hope they're gonna review this and move on.
Okay.
Must be his own. Look at those pictures. Don't need words. Has not come to you with one of them yet.
Well, it's kind of blurry. Does that mean they're already seeing it first?
No, it's an official letter, but.
So it's not, it's not official. It's just a lot of she wrote out. No, back road. Even the back road, there's something to be done with.
So my question is, if someone's not going to the bank, can I walk in and say, "I'm gonna build a storage unit, $500,000"? I don't have any bank interest in it. Will you make me produce my bank statements to you to show you that I can build my building?
The, if we look at Article 6, Improvement Guarantees and Courages. There are several different options here. Performance bond number one. An irrevocable letter of credit from a bank or the reputable institution. A letter of credit shall certify the following. The applicant does guarantee funds in a specified amount for a specified duration. That's not in that letter.
But that, I would interpret that as they need credit. So a letter of credit.
Right.
If I'm walking into you and I say, "I'm gonna build my building." The government asking for my bank statements to prove that I can build my building?
No, I'm asking for a bank statement.
Well, you're asking for me to produce something that says I could build it.
Evidence that they have that amount of money to cover the construction of that. Or evidence, the other option is evidence that cash has been deposited in an escrow account. And there's further explanation on that.
Is it?
The other option is a letter from a bank or similar financial institution or government agency demonstrating that credit is available to finance the proposed project or that the funding institution intends to fund the project, indicating the amount of funds and the specified uses. So again, in all of those instances, there needs to be a specified amount.
Yeah, I totally get it if credit's being used. Hundred percent. They gotta, the bank is approving that person.
Right.
It sounds as if she's not using it to finance the project. Or he's just saying, "I've done several projects where she has the financial means to do them."
Right.
He's not saying, "We're writing a line of credit for them."
This is, no. He's saying that she has.
The ability to do it.
The adequate funds in various deposit accounts. I don't know, what is your thought on that, Mark? Does anyone want to see this?
I sure want to see it. I really want to see it. It sounds like she has the funds to do it at the moment. But there's nothing here that says that's what she's gonna use them on or she's gonna pay them.
Maybe they're in multiple accounts, but if she's paying for multiple accounts, that's to say something, that she will be paying the money. So there needs to be a guarantee that that money is available for this project.
I think I should move on.
But that's where I would struggle, is there needs to be a guarantee. Because halfway through, if she goes through a financial problem, she's not finishing the project.
Right.
And we've got nothing to go back to and say, "But you have this money set aside for that."
Right. And that's the purpose of having that money set aside.
But even in that case, it's not, we're not locking that money. We're not saying it's the only purpose it's gonna be used for. Yeah.
Well, if you read the part where it says escrow, that's exactly what it's telling you. If it's an escrow, it's gonna be used for that purpose.
Until it doesn't, Denise. I mean, I have it all the time. Until I, until I legally go to my attorney and say, "Free up the cat." I mean, I get what you're saying, but what teeth do we have to go back and say, "That was an escrow"? And what are we gonna do? Take our property? I mean, we're not the financial police. I get, we, again, if you got credit and you're gonna go for a bank loan and you're gonna do this billion-dollar project, $10 million-dollar project, we want to know that you got the line of credit to build this store. I don't, I don't know, man. I don't feel comfortable with it. I'm good with the letter.
Says the evidence that cash has been deposited in escrow account at a bank or the reputable institution, having an office in the town of Madison and acceptable to the planning board, and the escrow agreement acceptable to the planning board. And then it goes on that, "In the event of failure, that the escrow agent shall pay to the town immediately those funds." But she does not have an escrow account here in Madison. So this bank is not indicating that there's credit, that they're offering any credit.
We're telling them they have to have their money in the town of Ma, in a bank that has an office in the town of Mass. Wow. All right. I guess we're gonna review that one.
The concern is that they're not guaranteeing a specific amount of funds and for how long that money's going to be available.
No, it does say, "Currently maintains adequate funds in various deposit counts to complete the project." So it gives a timeframe to completion.
That's not a timeframe. Because how long is it gonna take her to complete it? You know, that there's a time that she's expected to complete the project by, and then these have the funds available through that time?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay. Rich, you have a question?
Do those funds locked in specifically for that project or it just, just says they have it?
Just says they have it.
They're not locked in. Mark.
All right. So why wouldn't 48535 apply?
48535.
It's just above Article 6. Which it says, "The applicant must demonstrate the financial and technical capacity to carry out the project in accordance with this chapter and approved plan." 48535.
Okay. She's accomplished B. See, we already have that information. And she did provide the estimated cost of the project, I believe. I don't have the materials with us, but.
I'm just quoting it A.
Yeah, A. Good point.
I think 4436 gets into the planning board may require the posting of an improvement guarantee.
Right.
I don't remember, like, the guy that was changing his camp on the link there this last winter.
Wouldn't.
Thank you. I don't remember seeing any financial guarantee that he could finish the project.
Was it site review or real land?
It was both. It was both, didn't it? Because he's changing his, he would have been additional to structure.
Right.
He insured it.
I don't think, I don't think site review covers that.
Okay. So under financial capacity, Section 48 coordination 35. Thanks, Mark. Section A, the applicant must demonstrate the financial and technical capacity to carry out the project in accordance with this chapter and approved plan, given that information. And the bank is behind it stating that there is adequate funds, although it's in various accounts, that money is there.
And they've had a favorable experience with their intent.
Yeah.
They covered themselves with the word currently too.
Right.
485. That can move quickly.
Oh, that's all we can go with on that.
Oh, 44, sorry.
So. And they have, the organization had also mentioned previously that they have worked with her and that she's always had the money and has gone through and successful with it. So I think, given that history and given 48 coordination 35, that, that should be acceptable. Any thoughts on that? Rich, do you have a question?
I mean, you, just because you've done it before, it doesn't mean something can't go awry or nothing.
True. True. Okay. I guess, do we need to have a motion on that? No, we don't, because that was just an item that needed to be provided. So we're set to move on that. So she's moving forward. That's right.
Accepted. Moving forward.
Yeah.
Do we have to approve the downsizing of the project? Or is that all?
She's not really, she was only building one building, correct?
Correct. And that's the, that's a similar one that she's built already. Those pictures there.
Oh, here?
Same building, less doors.
Right. And she's only building the one. Okay, I, well, I don't have a problem with that, but I do, given the fact that we approved the storage, the single storage units or multiple units within one building, and she's changing that structure, we probably should have a motion to approve that. So is anyone willing to make a motion?
Yeah, we'll make that one.
Okay. One second. Anyone?
Sure.
Any concerns, questions? All in favor? Robin?
Earth to Robin.
Robin, are you in favor of?
I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Thank you. All right. So motion carried. All right. I am going to suggest that we move ahead to item three, public hearing for the subdivision so we can, so that they can, Denise, they can leave, should they wish to. Any issues with that?
No.
Okay. So, Steve, you were going to provide a revised map with the public deal, a piece of walls, and set fixes, found location, utility, and access of the project map.
I did. I haven't provided it yet, but I built it.
Sponsor for it.
Thank you. 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 So there are no utility poles?
Not within the property. There's underground. And I approximately show it. I showed the poles along the street, the interconnection point.
Where are the poles?
Says CMP pole number three.
Oh, there it is. I forgot it. Yep.
The dash lines are the approximate location of the underground utilities. It's not, I have.
Sorry. Okay. So, thank you for providing that.
Yes.
And we will move on to the public hearing. Okay, so 649, public hearing is not open for the subdivision for Kent and Ms. Curtis.
What time?
Is there anyone here who wants to comment on the subdivision application?
I think this will be the shortest one in history.
I think so too. All right, seeing as there are no comments, I'll close the public hearing. I should first ask the board, any questions for?
No.
Okay, excellent. So close the public hearing. We'll make it at 6:50. So you had completed, what did you conclude in all sections last time? And so, I believe, and the material, the information was provided, it was clustered. So I will need a motion that the plan is complete.
Okay.
Okay?
Second.
Who's second? We can't second.
No, I.
No, because only the active members can.
Okay. My bad.
That's okay. I need a second.
I'll say.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, concerns before we go for vote? Okay, all in favor? Sure. Raise your hands. Robin, are you in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carried. Thank you very much. And you'll have a final map for us to sign? Right there? Okay.
Yeah. I've got three of them.
Oh, three of them?
One for you, one for me, and one to record.
Okay, excellent. If you, we can just start that down the line or we can all sign that at the end. I'll, if you want to, you lead that.
Here, go ahead.
So.
Yeah, I got no recording for this one. I noted that J abstained.
Yes.
Does that one just leave him?
No.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Once we sign this, kind of, Lucy, you're all signed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mary, is that something I need to sign as well or no?
You will need to sign it, yes, please. So you can stop by the office probably and sign it. Please be in the office.
I will be there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, sir.
Did you sign it?
I still think it's.
Is that page?
I did.
That's just.
Oh. You would have signed it and you understand it.
We did. Are you saying from this?
Yes, it's, it's family.
Okay, got it. Thank you for explaining that.
Just like, do you recall the Western subdivision? I had to explain.
All right. I hope that's one. I hope that's one.
He's saying that's the, Kent. I speak. Thomas, we want the nice one to be able to speak. Yeah. The nice one.
It's gonna bother me out. I'm quite on the nice one though. Is that what you just said on my face? That's just what you said on my face.
I did.
I said, "That's what you just said on my face."
Oh, no, 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 no. No, I totally know.
Okay. Well, Mark is finishing that up. We have, of course, the proposed ordinance for Chapter 180, the drugs and drug paraphernalia, Articles 1 and 2. Thank you so much, Melanie, for putting this all together. And the, I don't know if, I'm not sure if my one request was.
Do you want to read that real quick now? Something non-75.
Oh, okay.
Last minute.
I can just give a quick brief order to the board too, if you want me to.
Those, would you want me to summarize?
So I had reached out to many municipal associations, legal services, just to get a second eye specifically on the medical cannabis article. Rebecca Manahan looked it over and said it all looked pretty decent. She did have some specific suggestions specifically on, one, the number of permits to three. She didn't think that looked terrible, making it less than the number we have, so long as, it's a little bit complicated, let me see if I can explain this. So long as none of the current businesses were given municipal approval, I'm saying that in quotes, because it's a specific term that means municipal approval, it's not just licensing by the town, but specific approvals that require standards. So for instance, site review, if any of the businesses in town underwent that kind of approval, then they would have to be allowed to have a license now. So if any of the current businesses in town operating as medical cannabis were approved by municipality before 2018 and are operating, we may want to consider upping the number of licenses. If that's not the case, then we're probably fine with the three. Another thing that she talked about was requirements for licensing. Instead of doing first serve, first basis, which may be a headache for the town if it turns out a lot of people are wanting licenses, we may want to look at another type of scheme. For instance, the city of, it's probably not a city, Southwest Harbor, has a merit-based system that they use that, for instance, if you have specific education in cannabis, if you have qualifications, if you've run other businesses successfully, if you are a local resident, those things give you more merits to get a license than other businesses that are also applying. So those are just two suggestions that she had.
Are those the license for the three or the license for the home provider you're referring to?
For the home provider?
Well, I remember we had discussion that you could have in your house to be a medical care provider. That was different.
Oh, that's different. I'm specifically talking about the retail.
So you're saying the three licenses?
Yes, for the retail establishments.
Okay. That's different.
So those were the two things that she had brought up.
So how many, there was only one that did not have a license, that had not been approved?
No.
Right?
No, the only one that was approved, I thought, was Wicked lettuce, right?
There's one prior to 18.
Right. It's Wicked lettuce.
Okay. Got that reversed. So the four don't, okay.
So that's a problem then, okay?
So then, that's not a problem then, so we just stay with the three, okay?
So those were the only two things she noted, so I just figured I would bring those up to you guys.
Okay, the, I don't know, actually, just answer my question, so that's fine. Okay, based on that information, do any of you want to make any changes to the licensing portion of this?
I would suggest then that the select board is going to be licensing them, that the select board look at that specific question.
Exactly. Because we don't issue licenses.
No. And we just pass it on, well, we can pass it tonight. Give it to them.
Do you want to go on to something? Okay. What we can do though, when we pass it forward, is mention that information, should they wish to, that we chose not to, but because that fell under the responsibility of the select board.
I can pass on with Denise to the examples that I printed out of those different municipalities that have used those systems.
Right. Okay. The one thing I had suggested on this was that the definitions that apply to Article 2 should all be included. And the cannabis testing facility was omitted from, still is not in here in Article 2, and that should be added. It is mentioned in this article, and so therefore it should be. It is mentioned in this article, and so therefore it should be defined, since these articles are stamped on the articles. And I noticed in reading the information that we were sent from the main municipal association that, you know, the legislature intended the two articles to be totally separate anyway.
Yeah.
Other than that, I saw no other issue. Did anyone have any questions?
I did.
Yes, right.
What happens if, who oversees all the rules? Who's gonna step in?
A enforcement officer?
Because I've talked to a few people about it. Supposedly, there are some of these retail outfits are not some medical. There's only under the counter.
And it would not just me, but OCP and would maybe their inspections as well.
The other thing I heard is if you wanted a medical marijuana card, just go ask the one, it's gonna cost your body bucks. Tell them I have a new rule in home, and they'd help me. That's it, they do it.
That's under the law, the state law, but they don't have to have.
Who bought it in, since OCP? You.
No.
You're breaking the law?
No, that would be the state.
No, that would be the state.
I was just wondering if we got complaints, what we're gonna do?
Report them to the state.
They reported to the OCP.
Thank you.
Now, is it reported to you and then sent on to the OCP? So no matter what, if there is a complaint, it should go through Jack first and then he'll turn that on because he's in charge of you.
So I guess there's something you should bring up.
Well, you would be asked.
And the law is very clear on that, that if they're a medical marijuana establishment, they cannot resell recreational marijuana, or excuse me, adult-use marijuana. But they have to, if they're on, they have to be sold.
It's very easy to feel medical marijuana, right?
It is, yeah.
You did.
Okay, um, so if there are no other comments on this, we have a public hearing on this tonight, so open the public hearing comments on Chapter 180. And I have, see up here that it's seven and two. Any comments, questions? Yes. Thank you, Randy. We have a whole page of questions there. Oh, okay.
Yes, I got three. Randy Bliss, Dorlan. All right, first question. What if an establishment is suspended for a time? Is there a time limit to be reinstated? If not, should there be? That's the first one. Second one. Can there be a legal challenge to the decreasing them from five to three? And third, does 180-12D need further clarification, like once the grandfather clause no longer applies? That's the select board, can only do three.
Okay, so your first question, let's go with that again.
Well, I'll give it to you.
Thank you. And then I'll give it to you, Jack.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Randy.
Okay, what if an establishment is suspended for a time? Is there a time limit to be reinstated? And if not, should there be? Is that, um, I suppose I would, one part of that would be up to OCP, depending on if they're breaking a, does, OCP doesn't suspend licenses, though, do they? They just.
I would imagine they do.
They suspend?
Oh. They would, they would do either.
Okay.
And it would be, it wouldn't be the local license. Well, first of all, let's get clarification. Does Randy mean the local license or the state-issued license?
Probably the state issue.
Then that's a state, a state question, we have no jurisdiction.
But once they're off that suspension, should you guys have a time limit for them to be reinstated?
Are you talking like a probation?
I don't know, maybe. But it's, I, I know that the board has had problems with, people just keep going on and on, and I wonder if you should limit that to a camp.
What board?
Like, you're talking about the planning board that we can issue a site review, with some people avoiding forever documents.
I don't think we have the authority to put punitive damage on top of what OCP would do.
Right.
I think that's a state issue. If they lose their license, they'll lose their license in Madison as well. If the license is suspended, they'll be suspended in Madison as well. But we don't have the right to, to further punitive punish business, I don't believe.
So, this is actually addressed in.
Question.
Section 180-19. Section G.
Which article?
So this is Article 2. So Section G, so again, it's 180-19. Denial, suspension, or revocation of a license, so Section G. Said the town may suspend or revoke a license for any violation of this section or any applicable building related in life safety code. The town may suspend or revoke a license if the licensee has a state license for cannabis establishment suspended or revoked by the state. The license shall be entitled to notice and a hearing to any suspension or revocation.
Hey, but the question is, is there a time limit?
Right, so I think that's what we have to kind of do, is figure out, do we need to, is that something we should do the select board as well?
Well, how do you? But.
Go ahead.
I think he's asking for additional, like, this says if the state suspends it, we're suspended.
Yes.
We can't be more punitive than the state. That's what his question is, is can we, I believe.
Well, let me further clarify that.
Okay.
What if they're number five, and that would drop them down to number four? So if they get their license suspended for a period of time, um, are they allowed to come back, or do they lose it and they're no longer allowed ever?
Well, it says here that the licensee shall be entitled to notice and a hearing to any suspension or revocation.
Okay.
And so again, that would be, I think that would be sent up to the select board to determine if there's gonna be a time limit. And would that, and Denise, would that be something that would occur in the course of a hearing for that suspension or revocation? Or is that something that the select board might include in this? And it would also depend upon what's being, why the state revoked a license or suspended a license, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I, I think there's too many variables to say who's, who's gonna put what time limit on it. Because it could be they're suspended for a, not having the right fire escape or something, you know? And then if they correct that issue, then the license is reinstated. So it, a lot depends on what caused the suspension. I don't think that there's any way to really predict a time limit or to put a time limit on it.
I would, I would think the state would, I would think the state would put that time limit on it. Like you said, if it was a fire escape, well, you have whatever, 30 days to do it, or whatever. So, I mean, if they still don't, then obviously the state's gonna handle it. And, I mean, I don't think as a town you could, like, overrule the state. I mean, on that instance, when, right, so. But, I mean, again, if it was something like they're selling it illegal, like, whatever, then I guess the state would still end up doing their punishment anyway, so I don't.
We're gonna own life safety, they're gonna own violations.
Right.
And if it's a life safety event, if the place is to get shut down, that's Jeff, and that would be a suspension. Most cases, life safety events by coenforcement, you're given 30-day notice. So if they fix it, they're not shut down.
Right.
If they continue to not fix it, yeah, there's gonna be a, but that's life safety. That's not, I assume, and that's wrong, that you were referring to, like, violation of sales, meaning they're, they're acting improperly with the state's rules. That's, we have the right to suspend for life safety, but that's about it.
Does that answer your question, Randy? Were you referring only to state or what, what the town would do?
Actually, I'm not sure what I was referring to now. But I was thinking of a prime example of, you know, they're doing something they shouldn't and they get caught, and they get, you know, their license suspended for a time.
Okay, that would be up to the state.
Yeah, that would be a state thing. And if the state caught them selling to people that weren't to be sold to, I imagine they would shut them down.
Right.
And they, they wouldn't be able to back up.
It would be the same as, like, alcohol, I mean.
Yep.
I would think it would be the same anyway. But if you're caught illegally selling alcohol, I'm sure you're not gonna, you're gonna lose your license, they're not gonna go, hey, you can have it if you want it.
Well, there's also the difference between a suspension and a revocation. If you're, if you're suspended, there's probably a period of time that's included in that suspension where your license is kind of like in limbo, and you have the chance to try to redeem yourself. If it's revoked, it's revoked, it's end of deal.
Right.
End of life.
Right.
All right, Randy satisfied with that? Thank you. Okay, second one. Can there be a legal challenge to the decreasing them from five to three? As far as I know, no, unless someone knows something else, because it's, we have.
There's no, there's no limit right now.
Right rule on that.
We also have the grandfather clause, which will allow any existing businesses to continue operating.
Until they close, or?
Yes. Also, again, we ran this past the legal service at the MMA, and they did not see any major current flags.
Okay, you have a question? Yes.
Concerning that, there is the Robinson-Pattman Act. You cannot suppress another business. Is, let's take Don's business, State Farm. If someone else wanted to go into scowling, he's got the State Farm insurance, uh, franchise for, for a certain area. Do you? Yes.
Or any contract, or not.
Well, anyway, it's like, okay, sure.
Walterite, yeah, Walterite, although they're different laws, yes.
That's right. You.
I know.
There is that act out there. Because I had that one, I, I had stores in certain areas, and another guy was gonna stop one up, and they tried to put him down, and they can't.
Right, but that's not, that's a, that's a franchise law, dealing with franchises. And as far as I know, I don't think so.
But this is still an opt-in, the town's had its own rule with marijuana establishments.
Right.
There's, there's no, first of all, federally marijuana is illegal. So there's no federal law that governs retail sales, including whatever thing you were just talking about. It would not cover retail sales of marijuana. So it, this is based on a state law and the state local ordinance. I mean, excuse me, the local ordinance that would specifically opt in and create our own local rules for dealing with it. I don't think that would apply.
I think it would, right.
Okay, so question three, does 180-12D need further clarification, like once the grandfather clause no longer applies? So 180-12D, the select board is authorized to issue more than three annual medical cannabis use establishment licenses that goes with this ordinance. Once the grandfather clause no longer applies. Can you explain that a little bit more, what you're?
Well, the way it sounds as written is next year, the select board can select three.
No, no.
No, no, no.
Those will still be, those that are currently in operation will continue to operate. All right, so that's where the grandfather clause applies, is to those that are currently in operation. So no more businesses can come in. But if one of those, one or more of the current businesses goes out of business, you know, they go out of business, and we don't have to permit anymore than the total of three in the town. Or if they move, move or rebuild. Does that help, Randy, or not?
Well, it, it just seems as written that someone can come back and say, hey, we were the first three to do it. Because it really doesn't, um, you know, give an exemption for the current grandfather.
No, that's in the next section.
18-13.
You might have been using a slightly older version, which would have been the non-conformant grandfather uses and activities.
Do you have one in 18-13?
Yeah.
The grandfathering doesn't just go away. The grandfathering is in existence until that business is no longer in existence.
Correct.
So it will always apply to an existing business.
Any, is that clear to you now, or not? I mean, have we clarified that?
It isn't, but I'll let it go.
Wow.
We'll see what others think.
Okay, think on it, and then, you know, keep your questions in the select board, right?
Yeah, it was the one I came up with today, trying to figure it out. I'm still confused by it, actually.
Okay. And you, you have any other questions?
No, those three were the only ones I had on the list.
Okay. So if no one has any questions, I'll entertain a motion to, I don't, we don't have to vote on this to send it to the select board. I'm interested in sending it on to you, because we.
I think you will, I think you make a motion.
You want us, only call to it? Okay.
Because you've already, you've amended it.
We're getting a phone call, we can't.
Randy, you're here.
Okay, 7:15.
7:16?
15.
15. Okay.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the ordinance as written and.
Amendmented.
Amendmented, thank you.
So.
And who would send it?
I can't.
Send it on to the select board. Okay, thank you. And is anyone seconding that?
Sure.
Okay, Mark? All right, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? All right, and Robin?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to commend Melanie for the work that she put on into this. It was absolutely well thought out and very, very thorough. And it really captures the essence of what the people of Madison wanted based on what they came to the town meeting with, so, thank you very much.
Yep.
So there were both of those for 170 and one in Epoque de la.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the select board was impressed.
We're happy to have you.
The select board was impressed with the work as well, so. Just remember to add that additional, that other definition.
Definitely.
Thank you. So in that, this is real marvelous.
Thank you.
Super job. Okay, there is, is there any new business, Jeff?
None, no. But I've got other business before the board.
Yes, any other business come before the board?
Training. There's some trainings that are available. I believe Robin has selected one, and Mark has selected one, and Mary has selected one. I don't remember which one is which, but one is on September 16th, the Shoreland zoning, Shoreline zoning presentation and discussion by Kevy Cobb. And on the, let's see, that was the September 16th. On September 18th is, oh, which one was this? Flood plane training in Brewer. Let's see, the Shoreland, that one's in Fairfield. The flood plane training is in Brewer. And then planning boards and local, local planning boards and Boards of Appeals workshop, October 10th. That one is in Augusta, the MMA building.
And you can also do that by Zoom, if I remember correctly, right?
I'm sorry, what?
That one's also operated by Zoom.
The Board of Booers one? I don't believe I have sent that one out yet.
Our Shoreland zoning will also be available by Zoom.
Yes.
So the one on the 16th is what I'm going to, that's where in Fairfield?
Yes.
Okay, oh, that's good, that's too far.
And that's the one Mark said he was gonna Zoom. Mark. Zoom. All right. Did you want me to drive?
Sure, if I don't.
And the one for the 18th was in Brewer, and that's where Robin is attending.
Yep.
I'm driving. And this, the, the local planning board and appeals workshop, that is a very informative one. Mary and I went to that one years and years and years ago, and I've gone again since then, but if anybody's interested.
I am, I just need to verify. So far, my calendar's open on that, so I can probably do that. But anyone who wants to go, if it happens recently, you really should. So, Jeff? So let Jeff know.
I'm busy, sorry. I don't have eight hours to give away.
What time is that across the thing?
Uh, the, the, the four thirty to eight thirty P M. Registration's at four.
Craig, are you interested in going? Okay, it's really good, and it gives you a lot of background in what planning boards can and can't do, and so, it's something that's a...
There is a Zoom option as well. And in-person MMA members are seventy dollars. We are MMA members, and the Zoom option is fifty dollars.
Um, put me down for the Zoom option on that. That's what, eight thirty to four thirty?
Uh, four thirty, registration's at four, workshop, uh, four thirty to eight thirty.
Okay.
We can get out in time to go to work.
Yeah. That didn't sound right. Okay. So, okay, board member concerns? Mark?
Yep. My son.
Craig.
If anybody's driven down Pine Street in the last year, you're seeing it getting more and more congested down here with all the trucks coming in. From what I've learned, when the mill closed, we went down to twenty seven percent sewer capacity. So to balance out, so that they wouldn't have to go up on the sewer bills, they looked for outside sewers to bring in sewer, and they're getting paid per gallon. Okay, little history behind it. In comes PFAs, and they're spending all kinds of money. And I'm wondering, and I'm just throwing this out, I, I have no answers. I'm just wondering if it's a revenue opportunity. We're dealing with a, with a scientifically questionable product. They say they know how to take care of it, but you know how the FDA and, they proved a lot of things that have, that have hurt people. You know, throwing this into the river afterward, supposedly, but I'm talking to different people, they heat it up, but when you heat something up, you usually change the consistency, from a solid to a liquid, or to a gas, am I right? Doesn't go away, it's just reformed into another thing. Now, waste management is bringing up all their reach up here, yet they charge us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to use the back gate. I'm just throwing out different things out. Is there an opportunity for us, like Narjow, for stuff? They get a tipping fee for garbage butt into their area. Should we, or should we not look into the profit with this PFAs, who should be looking for this? PFAs that are being hauled up here from New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and Rhode Island, and Madison. Is it a revenue opportunity? I, I'm not looking for any answer, I'm just trying to open up people's mind to, is it, is this something that would be good for us?
This might be something you'd want to bring up to the select board?
Well, I would think we'd start here, wouldn't we? Wouldn't we start here?
We don't have anything to do with the enforcement of that, of...
Well, if we...
It would be a sanitary board, it wouldn't be a...
Sanitary board.
They, well, the sewer district has their own board.
They have their own board.
I understand that, but if we built a building, we talked about a lot of things, from putting any grass and where the water's gonna go. Are we in, in that business, or something?
We don't regulate product that they bring in, or waste that they bring in. Again, that's the sewer district, and then that's regulated by the state, right? They have to be licensed, so whatever they're bringing in has to be approved by the state.
But I would think the sewer district would be against this immediately, because that's Jones.
I don't know, that's, we don't have any role in that.
If this all includes the land around here, we all have to deal with that. If we put it all by Lakewood, he might be calling right now. Don't kid yourself.
Right, but what I'm saying is...
Jurisdiction.
Yes, we don't have any role in that, the planning board does not. That would be the select board.
I don't understand the end of the theory. The golf course, if they put on chemicals on, on the grass out there, and it gets into the Lakewood, does it, do we have any say to that? Or we don't rule on golf courses?
We would rule on a new golf course coming in, but once a golf course is built, we don't have the right to enforce what chemicals they do or don't use as a planning board.
That's the DEP.
That's DEP, that's the state, that's, might be the town on some other law. It's not, we just, it's black and white, we either approve an application, or we don't approve an application. Once we do that, our enforcement is...
And when it comes to pesticides, whether they're playing the golf course, or out at the Hollyfield's, or whatever, that's all regulated by the Board of Pesticides Control. And if there are concerns that it is getting into the water, there can be testing that's done by the DEP. And if there's any violations, the Board of Pesticides Control comes in and investigates that. And again, depending on the violation, the DEP might be involved.
And that's not to minimize your concern, I think your concern is real. I just think the select board, and the primary board would be the sanitary, the sewage, like the water district, the sewer district, that would be the board you wanna start at, and say, boys, what are you doing?
What's around the pages? Here, here we got cannabis, nobody knew anything about cannabis, and all of a sudden, we were in a mess, and tried to dig ourselves out of that.
That had to do with, with the establishments, so approving those establishments. Whereas when we're talking about these other chemicals, whether it's PFAS, what have you, again, those are, that falls under the purview of the DEP.
And our mess was a result of a state law that changed. And we had, we had to adapt to that law. The legislature changed the law, so we weren't afraid of that.
We've got a lot of experience here tonight, now. Do you think this is something that we should go ahead? I'd like to hear your opinion.
Well, PFAS is a concern, but again, if, if you have those concerns, take them to the water district, and the san, or either the sanitary district. Yes.
Sorry, I just, there's some information that you may all not have, and that is that there is a congressionally-directed spending grant right now that is going to most likely go to the sanitary district to help them in the process of obtaining and, and creating a biodigester that they're going to use in conjunction with Timor HP, um, to deal with PFAS, to break it down, to withdraw the, the potentially worst elements, um, and separate them, and cleanse the rest of it through the wastewater treatment plant. That hasn't been approved yet, and I don't know that they're actually accepting PFAS right now. I think that they are, they're working on a plan to do it, but I don't think that they have gotten to the point where they're actually accepting PFAS yet.
That's very helpful, thank you. Um, and the other thing, when it comes to PFAS, I mean, you're talking thousands of molecules that would be considered, or, or chemical compounds would be considered PFAS, and there's no testing available for a great many of those yet. So the DEP, or, excuse me, the EPA is establishing, um, testing requirements. You know, they're working a little bit at a time to do it, it takes a long time to develop those tests.
Marine Fish and Game just ruled you shouldn't eat any fish from the Madison Dam now. None, zero.
And again, I think it's a valid concern, I think it has to go to the san... I, I don't disagree, you asked for our opinions, I don't disagree with you. I think it's a threat, but it's not a threat that the planning board can just...
But I think it's, thank you. But I, I just see it, Narjow benefits with waste management. They almost, if they'd really done it right, they wouldn't have had no taxes down there. But we're, we're taking on a very questionable product up here, more than we presumed. We're not taking care of our own waste, we're taking care of a lot of other fields' waste. Should we put some kind of tipping fee on it?
And again, that comes, we talk about tipping fees, or what have you, that's something that the select board...
It's a good revenue source for us, we're gonna take the chance.
It wouldn't be a revenue source for the town, it would be a revenue source for the sanitary district. The town is not accepting it, the sanitary district would be accepting it. It's a totally separate, it's quasi-governmental, it is not a part of town government. So it, it has to go through the sanitary district.
Well, that's why I'm picking your brain here.
Okay.
I don't...
My brain is picked.
I'm sure they are getting hurt in low-income cities.
Slim pickings right now.
I don't know where the money goes, but I'm sure they're getting...
Well, that's a big problem on Pine Street, there's methane, gas coming out of there like crazy. I know people that live there, that it's reducing the value of their homes by a lot. There's times, would you like to live beside it? That's right.
So the, over in Anson, they're gonna be putting in the new structure over there eventually. It hasn't gone through the planning board, complete planning board process yet. Um, and they don't have complete, all their funds yet. Eventually, they're gonna have a pump station where the scale shack was on the, at the end of, uh...
Canobax.
Canobax Street. Until that funds arrive, they'll be pumping out at the sanitary district.
But you, but you think, they charge us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, to use the back, back gate, am I right?
I don't, uh, I think it was, are you talking about waste management in the budget? I think it was around two sixty-five, two hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, they're bringing their leach it up, and H O Bishad is hauling it, four or five trucks a day up here.
Eventually, we'll have, they'll have to come to the planning board when they build their pump station, if it ever gets their funds.
Waste management told me that they would build the line from Narjow to Madison and pump it up. And Madison sanitary, uh, said no.
Okay, Craig, do you have any other concerns? Okay, thank you, Don.
No.
Do you have anything, Richard?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Last thing.
Yes.
At the last select board meeting, we decided that there was gonna be a joint planning session. I didn't know if that, you had that on your agenda.
Oh, I never communicated with him about it, right?
Okay, I think it was October twelfth? Was it Saturday?
Yes.
Nine, like nine to three?
Oh, nine to three, okay.
I, I don't remember if that's the time you set, I just...
Well, I know originally you thought...
Somebody wanted the start at eight, and I said they were crazy.
Um, oh, no, the nineteenth, October nineteenth.
Oh, Saturday?
Yeah. You, you said nine to, I had October nineteenth, nine to noon.
Wait a minute, I can't do the nineteenth, I wouldn't, October nineteenth? I'm, I'm not gonna be around on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Nine to noon?
That's what, I had issue, talked all day, and then last I heard was nine to twelve, so...
Okay.
Randy, you were at the board, do you remember what the, at that meeting?
I remember something about Denise being, bringing breakfast, that's all I remember.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll go to Dunkin' Donuts.
On a Saturday?
Yeah.
In October.
Okay, so you think it's the twelfth, then?
I, yeah, the nineteenth is blocked off on my calendar, I'm gonna be away that weekend.
Okay. Uh, if you...
So the twelfth or the twenty-sixth?
Oh, wasn't it twenty-sixth? I do know that.
Was not?
No, but twenty-sixth wasn't mentioned.
Okay.
Well, the twelfth is Yom Kippur.
The fifth?
You were saying the twelfth from nine to four?
Nine, no, nine to noon, nine to noon or nine to three. It's just, it, it's a planning, it's kinda like a planning session between the select board and the planning board to try to get a, um, a vision of what we wanna do over the next year or so. Where do we wanna go, what do we wanna...
For six hours?
No, three hours, nine to twelve.
Three, nine to, I said nine to three, it was nine to twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry. So it's a comprehensive plan?
I, I don't know, it's, it's more like setting priorities, so that I know what I'm supposed to be focused on, more than anything else.
And so that we can work in conjunction with the select board to find out what...
We can't do that in an evening, we wanna do that on a Saturday?
I think a lot of them already have other meetings, and this Saturday was the best day for everyone to go, for most people to come, was Saturday morning. So, um...
It's not an obligation, it's, it's something that you can, if you can make it...
I mean, I just, yeah, I mean, I...
No, we're not gonna require you to be there.
I don't know, we get with issues.
You're not getting paid for it, let's put it that way.
We can all have our own opinion, our visions, where we wanna be, but we have no control over that.
Well, no, that's what's important, so where do you think, what do you think the planning board should be working on? Like, if that is our responsibility, and what does the select board think? And, you know, we saw this comprehensive plan that we need to pull together.
We have to finish that.
So, um...
Setting priorities on how do we get there.
Right, and all these ordinances, so, because there's ordinances that we need to do.
I think it's a good thing, is the twelfth or the nineteenth?
It will not be the nineteenth, it would be the twelfth, if any.
Okay, so if you just get back with, you know, send, let Jeff know, and, and me, and then we can get it out to everybody when there's, um... And a general description of the objectives, so that everybody knows.
Yep, and there will be a Zoom link, and the thing is, it, it's an open meeting, so it's open to the public. Anybody that wants to come can come. They not necessarily have a voice, but they can, they can attend. Randy can't have a list of questions.
Right.
Well, he can, he might not be able to share them.
Because that's why, if the public has input during this, we'd never get out of there. I mean, we wouldn't be able to accomplish...
Right.
Have our discussion, so, okay.
All right.
All right, well, just let me know.
I will.
And we can let everyone else know, and if you can make it, that would be wonderful. And, um, once you have a better idea, maybe you'll have some suggestions that you can even just send our way, and we'll discuss that. Okay, so, I believe we're finished, so we'll adjourn at seven thirty-seven.
Seven thirty-seven, the next meeting will be...
I don't have any concerns.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Robin.
The next meeting is the tenth of September.
Have a good day.